Greetings. My name is Tina Sursted, and I'm proud to be a member of the League of Women Voters Dakota County. It is my privilege to present our moderator, Lynn Lewis. Lynn is an active member of our league, very valuable member of our league, and currently serving as a co-president and co-chair of the Voter Service Committee for the League of Women Voters Dakota County. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening, and welcome to the Dakota County Commissioner District Five Burnsville Candidate Forum hosted by the League of Women Voters Dakota County. We appreciate the candidates for joining us tonight. A special thanks to the city of Burnsville for providing the venue and to the Burnsville Community TV for recording and broadcasting this event to residents across the district. We will also share the recording on the League of Women Voters social media platforms. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with 104-year history, and we're committed to empowering voters through education, engagement, and civic participation. We do not support or oppose any political party or candidate. League of Women Voters Dakota County aims to deliver unbiased information to Minnesota voters irrespective of their political affiliations. This forum is a public service designed to offer you the chance to hear directly from the candidates about important issues. Please note that the views expressed are those of the candidates and not those of the league. Our sponsorship of this forum does not constitute an endorsement of any candidate. We provide complete unedited recordings of our forums. Editing is permitted only for official media purposes, and any excerpts or edited clips must not be used for partisan or political purposes. Tonight, there are two candidates competing for one open seat on the Dakota County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin with opening statements given in alphabetical order. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order, with each candidate again having two minutes. The order of answering questions will alternate between the candidates, with each having 90 seconds to respond. Our timekeeper will signal with a yellow card when 15 seconds remain and a stop sign when it's time to wrap up, so we can move on to the next candidate. Many of the questions for this forum were submitted electronically to the league and reviewed by our members for clarity. Additionally, some questions were created based on topics of interest identified in the community. Due to time constraints, we'll not be able to ask every question submitted. The forum will conclude in 45 minutes to an hour. So let's begin with opening statements. The order for opening statements will be Youssef Haji followed by Liz Workman. Youssef?
Thank you so much. I want to thank the League of Women for hosting this incredible event. What a moment for me to be sitting here with our longtime county commissioner, Liz Workman, who has done a lot for the community of Burnsville. And at the end of the day, we must appreciate some of the work she has put in for this district. So I say to you, thank you, and thank you to all of you, too. I am running for Dakota County Commissioner to bring real change, effective leadership to our community. Burnsville is diverse, vibrant, and evolving community that needs leaders who are committed to serving all of its residents. It's our responsibility to commit to serving collectively all of our residents, and it must reflect the diversity of our community and to protect the most vulnerable in our community. As your county commissioner, I will ensure that everyone, especially those who may have not had the capacity or desire to hold elected office, I have your voice at the table at the county board. Also, I'm Youssef Haji. I'm a homeowner, small business owner, husband, and a proud father of five. I live in Burnsville for over five years now. My wife, Anissa, is a community health professional, and together we are raising our family in a wonderful community. And many of you have faced a lot of challenges like I have, living in this great country. As you know, we've got to put in work to get where we want to work. And for my history, having been in this country from 1999, I've put in the work. I have lived experiences, like I was a renter, I was looking for transportation, I was looking for anything that might help, any support that I might get. And not all of us are as lucky. And so I say, this is who I am, and it's going to be about for me as the next county commissioner, and I'm going to put in to make sure everyone, every voice is represented at the Dakota County Board.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters and the city of Burnsville for providing us with this opportunity to do a candidate forum. It has been an honor for me to serve as Dakota County Commissioner over the years, and it's a very humbling experience to know that I have the trust of the community. It gives me an opportunity to help those people who need it. I first moved to Burnsville in 1985, and that is when we opened up our business. I've raised two children. They've gone through School District 191. I was first elected to the county board in 2008, re-elected in 2012. I have to do math, 2016 and 2020. I was fortunate to also serve as board chair in 2012. No, excuse me, that was 2014, 2019, and last year in 2023. And I currently chair the General Government and Policy Committee. We also serve on many different regional committees. For example, one of the things I sit on is Metropolitan Mosquito Control District. It's something that we all, if you pay property taxes, you pay into the district. And I think as a Minnesotan, we can all talk about mosquitoes and how much fun they are during the summer. I absolutely love living here and representing the people of Burnsville, so thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now, we'll move on to questions. The response order for the first question will be Liz Workman followed by Youssef Haji. The first question is, what's your favorite place or places to spend time in Burnsville or Dakota County, and why? Liz?
Well, in Burnsville, I'd have to say home. I'm kind of a homebody. I spend a lot of time gardening. I also, during the winter, I do a lot of stained glass, so I like to stay home. Dakota County, I actually enjoy going down to the county seat. That is where we have our meetings. It's really a beautiful drive from Burnsville to the county seat, and it's 22 miles one way from my house to the administrative building. I don't go out and about much, but when I do, I stick around. I shop and play in Burnsville, so. And if I can't find it in Burnsville, I still stay within the county.
Youssef?
Well, my favorite place is, I live right close to Crystal Lake. It's right there, summertime, I get to walk with my kids out there. It's about five minutes' walk from my house. So for me, it's a beautiful place to be, especially when summer comes around and there's so much activity and a lot going on. And I live in a very nice, quiet, beautiful neighborhood right by the lake, so that is one of my favorite places. I do run, as you can see, I'm really trying to get that six-pack. And so I'm doing a lot of walking and running and trying to get in shape, like Liz, and so that is one place. The other place I want to also, I like to spend time, is our local parks. They're beautiful, they're well-preserved, they're well taken care of, they're so quiet, with so much safety around our parks. And so for me, those are two places I like to spend a lot of my time. Of course, there are other places, too, I like to spend my time, but don't tell my wife, maybe next time.
Thank you. The response order for the second question will be Youssef Haji followed by Liz Workman. And our second question is, as a Dakota County Commissioner, what one area would you like to see receive more attention from the commissioners, and why?
I think social service. We need to invest, we need to hire, we need to support our workers across. Together with that, we need to make sure that that goes hand in hand with our mental health. And we are shortage of staff and workers at the county level, and we need to hire more, we need to pay people better. We want to make sure that, since COVID, you know, there's been a lot of issue with mental health in many of our communities, and that has been a challenge, to be honest. And so we, as leaders, must make sure that those that are vulnerable in our community, those that need help in our community, those that need support in our community are taken care of, either making sure that we're adequately staffed and also we're well-funded, and also more so in our youth program. We make sure that our youth are not idling around in some of the neighborhoods that they have something to look to, and someone to inspire them. As a county commissioner, I actually have a record to beat. I want to beat Commissioner Joe Atkins' number in how many people he knows, or how many people he gets to be in contact with. So I want to make sure that I can be there, I want to become the next county commissioner. So those are some of the things that we need to do and make sure that we focus on.
Liz?
Thank you. That was going to be one of my answers. Thanks for stealing my thunder. So my second area would be around affordable housing. We're working on that, and the county board is also the board of directors for the Dakota County Community Development Agency, and that's where a lot of the bricks and mortar, the housing, starts in that area. We are opening a new one in Eagan, it's called Nichols Point. It's a 55-plus veteran preference facility to address the veteran homeless population. We just broke ground in Farmington on a 40-unit townhome development called Denmark Trail, and that is going to be absolutely beautiful when it's done. But the issue is that the demand for affordable housing outweighs the availability countywide. So besides building new, the CDA also provided some gap financing for the revitalization of existing affordable housing in Burnsville.
Thank you, candidates. The response order for our next question will be Liz Workman followed by Youssef Haji. And the third question is, what do you consider to be the two or three most pressing issues facing Dakota County, and why?
Well, 90 seconds isn't going to cover all of that. So I mentioned affordable housing, Youssef, mental health. A few of the other things, probably not as exciting, is we have to have a bridge replaced on I-35 at County Road 50. There's horrible backup that occurs right on the interstate, and we are working with our federal partners to receive funding for a bridge replacement and expansion at County Road 50. Something else not real sexy is an additional recycle zone. We're working with the state to secure funding for the recycle zone plus, because the one that is in Eagan, it's older, and it's to capacity. So we looked and found an area in Lakeville where it would be appropriate to put an expanded recycle zone, so that residents will have two places to drop off. And the only other thing that I can think of that we're working on right now is, there is a new sales tax, it's the LAHA, please don't ask me the acronym, but we are working on how to use that funding to address the affordable housing issue.
Well, she answered one of my questions, too. Where do we spend? Where do we get the money to build affordable housing? So I think, for me, when I look at the three most pressing issues that we have, it's also affordable housing, and I thank county commissioner Workman for answering that. And the other one is road and construction. As you all know, County 42 is kind of a bottleneck for a lot of us here in Burnsville, both in and out, it extends out east-west, and so that is one place that I would love to revisit and look at and see how we can expand. But I always believe that we should not only just build roads for cars, we should build roads for people, too, and biking lanes, you know, we move on to electric. You know, we need to think of moving forward for Burnsville. Burnsville should not be a castle, medieval castle. Burnsville should be a place where it should be accessible to Apple Valley, to Savage, to 35W east-west, everywhere, we should have access to that. And I think County 42 plays like a medieval bridge, you know, and maybe someone might be there asking, what do you want? But hey, you know, I know, I know, and I believe, and we can do that. The third important thing is, of course, public safety. Collectively, I know we elect our sheriffs as well, but recently in Burnsville, we've heard, we've seen, we've witnessed, we lost three young men who are public servants, police officers, and firefighters.
Thank you, candidates. And the response order for our next question will be Youssef Haji followed by Liz Workman. And our next question is, as a bit of background for our listeners, the Metropolitan Council is the regional policymaking body, planning agency, and provider of essential services for nine Twin Cities metro counties, representing 55% of Minnesota's population. How would you describe Dakota County's relationship with the Metropolitan Council, and what changes, if any, would you like to see in that relationship? Youssef?
This is a very important body, and they do a lot, and we need to partner with them. My leadership style is collectively working with everyone to make our community better, that we can live collectively a good life, and that is safe. And I think Metropolitan Council is the policy and the body and everyone that, in that, we as county commissioners can work with it. I've not seen really a good relationship builder that is happening, and if I'm the next Dakota County Commissioner, I will not only work with Met Council, but I also work with our legislature, regardless, whoever comes in and is elected in this election circle, and make sure I have a good relationship with. As you know, that county commissioners, just apart from our cowork of, you know, taking care of the people that represent, but we also are passers. And we need to build bridges, we need to build relationships, and we make sure that, Metropolitan Council and many other groups, that we are partnering with them to make our communities better, and that's what I'm going to do.
Liz?
Thank you. Our relationship with the Met Council in the past was not very good. It always seemed the focus of the Met Council was on the core counties and not so much on the outer ring counties. It's getting better. Well, yeah, Dakota County now has two Met Council representatives who attend everything. In the past, that wasn't the case. A few years ago, there was a move to try and change the structure of the Met Council, because they are only one, well, they're the only one in the state with the kind of authority that they have, that they received back in Dave Durenberger days. I'm not going to date myself, but that was a long time ago. And there was a move to change the structure so that they weren't all appointed by the governor. That didn't happen, the legislature didn't work to change that. They tried to structure it so that it could be another elected position, and that's not the answer for that either, because a lot of people don't even know who our county commissioners are, you know, let alone a Met Council representative. So I have to say, though, that the relationship with Dakota County currently, it is improving immensely.
Thank you, candidates. The response order for the fifth question will be Liz Workman followed by Youssef Haji. And our next question is, as a county commissioner, what measures, if any, would you support to reinforce or ensure voter confidence in our elections? Liz?
You know, a couple of years ago, the last couple of elections, we did not do well. We've made some changes and revamped that area. I am thrilled with who we have in place. Dakota County follows all the rules. The Secretary of State was just out to look at, we do a public sampling of your machines, we receive devoted confidence. And on a personal note, two years ago, my husband insisted on voting for the primary. He was very ill and wasn't able to make the walk from the car to the voting booth. They, the election judges, it was so impressive. One from each party came out to the car with a ballot and had him vote in the car, and then myself and the election judges walked it back and ran it through the machine. It was the best thing I've ever seen. It was so impressive, and he had the opportunity to vote in the primary. So I have every confidence that we are doing it well.
Youssef?
I have heard of your husband, Liz, and, you know, my condolences to you and your family and everyone else.
Thank you.
Sorry. I want to be very clear that I support Steve Simons when it comes to what he's doing right now, and I also support our state legislatures in making sure everyone in Minnesota is able to vote. We live in a great country. Like, I come from a place where voting is not usually something that is respected, and you know, there's measures of force, or even brutality, or, you know, even killing, you know, when it comes to voting. But I've been here since 1999, and I followed the rules, I have been part of this Minnesota community. I'm a huge Vikings fan, by the way, but I don't want to get into that, maybe later. But voting is something that is essential, it's important, it's paramount. We need to make sure that everyone who's able to vote has access to register to vote, to be able to have access to go in peacefully without being harassed or given any stress. We must be able to translate some of, you know, we have communities that have come here, and they do face language barriers. And this past election, we've seen in the primary that we had with Liz, that people had a little bit of challenges. So wish we could get more people that speak different languages, that are able to help people get to vote, and also make it more easier for them to be able to vote.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Youssef Haji followed by Liz Workman. And our next question is, how would you ensure that county residents have an opportunity to be heard at board, committee, workshop, and advisory committee meetings? Youssef?
This is very important. Look, you know, county commission is the closest to, it has impact on our communities here in Burnsville. It is like, it's something that a lot of our community really don't really pay attention to, and I would really want them to pay attention, so what am I going to do to change that? Really, I do want to open an office, hopefully, here in Burnsville, so people can have access to me, not only just driving like Liz has mentioned, driving to Hastings, 22 miles, it's a long distance, but I would like the residents of Burnsville to have access to me. Like I said, I want to beat Commissioner Joe Atkins. Like you said, he has 7,500 access of the Dakota County residents, so I want to beat that number. And so I want to go out and talk to people, whatever opportunity that I get, and let them know of what we're doing as a county commissioner, if I am elected as the next county commissioner. I will do workshops, I will attend community gatherings, and like I said before, I had mentioned, I'm a huge Vikings fan, so anyone in the community, especially here in Burnsville, that can host a Viking game, I will show up and talk to the neighbors, talk to the community, and really hear their concerns and issues that I have. Like, I am available those Sundays just to watch football with my neighbors, just to get things done for them as well.
Liz?
You know, this is always a challenge, even when I was on the city council, is how do you get people engaged? Every one of our meetings is on Zoom, and people have an opportunity to, I mean, we're live, but we also use Zoom so that people have an opportunity to comment during the comment portion of the meetings. Every workshop that we have, everything we do is at Hastings, and all of our meetings are televised. Before COVID, we would flip between the Northern Service Center and the Western Service Center in Apple Valley, our workshop or committee meetings. We'd go for six months in one place and six months in another, but they weren't televised. So the majority of the board made the decision that we need to be televised, and so the only place to do that is in Hastings. And it's not convenient, there's not even transit to Hastings, so you would have to drive. It's not, but this has always been a challenge to get people engaged and to even know what your county commissioner does for you.
Thank you. The response order for our next question is Liz Workman followed by Youssef Haji. And our next question is, water quality, wildlife, and natural areas are important to residents' quality of life. What is the role of the county in assuring that natural resource issues are addressed and their quality maintained? Liz?
Oh, we do so much. We have, that is a really good question, because the county, we have a huge focus on natural resources, water quality, habitat, along with our, we have a greenway system that we're building up for people to bike or walk, and it's usually through a natural area. I think probably the most known natural area is Lebanon Hills, but we do have so many other ones. We have Whitetail Woods, which is all-natural, and we spend, we've increased the budget. When I first got on the board, the budget for natural resources was only $500,000 a year. It's well over $1 million a year now, and we keep adding to that budget because we know how important it is to maintain those natural areas and the impact that it has on the county if you don't. We, I don't know if you know about the bison that the county recently brought in, and that in and of itself, with the grazing, it is revitalizing an area of the county that wasn't in real good shape. So we're thinking of different ways to increase the natural areas within the county.
Youssef?
I believe that globally, our planet is at a tipping point, and so we, all of us, have a role to play in making sure that we take care of these planets. And it starts with home, where we live, where our community is. And I am so lucky to live in Burnsville, to be honest with you. And in the early summer, you see all this kind of natural wildlife that comes to life. It's beautiful, and it's amazing, and this goes out all throughout the summer. And you see the beauty of, you know, people always say, Minnesota, where do you live in Minnesota? We live in Minnesota because there is always light at the end of the tunnel, and that is our summer, here. While we are crawling through the winter and struggling, we look, and so for Burnsville and for Dakota County, it's amazingly placed that, when we go around our community and we drive and we go to these places, like she had mentioned, like Lebanon Hills and among other places, it's so beautiful just to drive around. It just takes your mind off a lot of the, you know, stress that we have in our community. And so I believe that we need to make sure that we invest in things that do not destroy our planet. We invest in non-fossil fuel, we invest in solar, we create more places that we can raise our kids that don't have to worry about the air they breathe or the water they're going to drink. You know, everybody is a little bit scared of the future, so.
Thank you, candidates. The response order for our next question will be Youssef Haji followed by Liz Workman. And our next question is, do you believe Dakota County has enough affordable housing options? If yes, why? If not, how would you propose increasing those options as a county commissioner? Youssef?
We do not, to be honest with you. And county commissioner Liz Workman really mentioned and articulated that very well, that some of the challenges that we see and we have, but this has to be a priority. Like, we have to build, we have to find space to build housing. We have to keep people in Dakota County, and more so, we have to keep people in Burnsville. People have to live here, they have to work here, of course, a well-paying job, a union job preferably, you know, and make sure that we take care of the people, residents of Burnsville, and also getting them the resources that they need. I have seen, I have gone to many homes around here in Burnsville, I've seen the challenge for our senior citizens, you know? You know, yes, most of them want to live at home, you know, live in their own space and their own homes. live in their own space and their own homes and, and all that. But there's a lot more of our community who are, who are senior citizens also struggle with the issue of affordable housing. So this is why it's important for us collectively as a community and as a county board also, when we get there, that we tackle this issue of affordable housing. If we have that, then we have people living here with a well-paying job, union jobs, and also people can invest here, can start business here, and we can raise our family here in Burnsville, and that's what it's going to be about for me as a county commissioner.
Liz?
No, we don't have enough affordable housing in the county. A lot of it is what it costs now to, to build. But last session, when the legislature passed that LAHA tax, it's a sales tax, that the funding goes directly to cities and counties for affordable housing. And we're, like I said, we're still discussing how best to, to use that. And there's so many different types of housing that is needed. You have singles, you have workforce, you have veterans, you have seniors. And how do you address all those needs? One issue that we've run into, and it's, it's zoning. And there's a perception that affordable housing is, it's a negative. And it's, it's not. It's just affordable. Things, we do certain things to make that housing affordable. But it, if a city doesn't want it, and I'm not saying it's, this is Burnsville, I mean, this is countywide, that if a city doesn't want it, they can make sure that the zoning doesn't occur. So we need that kind of partnership also to increase the amount of affordable housing.
Thank you, candidates. The response order for our next question will be Liz Workman, followed by Youssef Haji. And our ninth question is, what recommendations, if any, would you make to improve public transportation in Dakota County?
There are options. You know, not all roads go north, I mean, not all tran, transportation goes north and south. We, we have a problem with the east-west connection. We don't have the transit necessary to travel east and west. We don't have the transit necessary even to go within the city. And that, it, it, it would be working with, but there has to be a demand for it. Otherwise, the supplementing that kind of transit, it's very expensive. But there has to be the demand. I know the MVTA is working on micro-transit right now, and they're providing that short trip, which is great. But the subsidy for it is also very high. There's Uber and Lyft. Dakota County has a program for seniors and people with disability to use Lyft to get to and from work or to and from a doctor's office. There are, it's not just hopping on a bus anymore. You have to be creative in transportation and determine where the needs are. And to me, it's those short trips. And it's traveling east and west throughout the county. And like I said, the city of Hastings doesn't even have transit, so, you know.
I think we can offset what we are spending in Lyft by really thinking about long-term future and spending more, now on things like trains. Start thinking, having that conversation of having a train that comes to Burnsville, of course, all natural or electric train, access to buses that are environmentally friendly, working with other transportation groups and, and companies to see how we can really provide transportation. Because not everyone can drive, no, not everyone has access to a vehicle. A lot of our community really do struggle, and if a car breaks down, then you're stuck, to be honest. And we, you cannot move from point A to point B very quickly. And Uber and Lyft tends to be a little bit on the, on the high end, you know, depending on the time and day, what you want to travel. And so we need to start thinking, because like I said before, and I made it very clear, we don't need Burnsville to be a medieval castle. We need to be able to open up Burnsville so that everyone is, has access to Burnsville. People can move transportation much more quicker, that we, we have jobs for people in Burnsville, and we have affordable housing for people in Burnsville. And also, more importantly, safety. So these all come, and it's important that they come into play.
Thank you. The response order for our next question will be Youssef Haji, followed by Liz Workman. And our next question is, many residents cannot attend meetings held by commissioners because of work schedules or travel time to Hastings. How do you or would you solicit input from your constituents on issues that are important to Dakota County? Youssef?
Well, like I said, and I think I've answered this question before, and I'm going to say it again, and emphasize it on, I'm a people's person. I do well when I talk to people, when I meet people face-to-face, when you get to welcome me into your homes and now, and, and, and all, all your community events, and also even for your Viking Sunday game events. And, and that's one. But also, I will propose that have an office, hopefully here in Burnsville, so that people can have access to me. And, you know, and I'm going to put that schedule out and time that I'll be available to meet with the residents of Burnsville. And also generally for Dakota County, I will, you know, I've seen Commissioner Liz attend many events outside Burnsville, including the Dakota County Fair and many other places. So we have spaces where we can really, you know, communicate and talk to our residents of Dakota County. But for me, it's the people of Burnsville. Those are my people, these are my priority, those, this will be my community, and those are the people I really want to really understand, the issues and the things that need to get done at Dakota County, that I'm here for them, and I'm going to listen. So I'm going to find many ways to connect with the community. But like I said, Sunday, Sunday is my days, let's meet, let's connect.
Liz?
You know, if someone were, were to call my office number, it rings on my personal cell phone. I have those calls forwarded. And then we have staff who forward emails that come to all of us. That's one way. You know, if somebody has a better idea, I, I'm all ears. I'll, you know, let, let us know.
Sunday Viking games.
Besides Vikings games. Let us, let, I wear purple and gold, too. You know, let us know what you're thinking. I, I, social media. I have my personal page, and then I have my, what I refer to as my county page. And I, I try to get followers, you know, if I see something, press releases from the county, I push those out. I follow a different social media, specifically Burnsville pages. So if I think it's something, like County Road Eleven, the Roundabout, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but that took a while to finish. And when we got the press release that it was done, I pushed that out. So if there are other ways that people know of that can help us be out there, and besides what Youssef said, you attend events, but if there are other ways, let, let us know because we, we would like to know.
Thank you. And this brings us to our last question, and the order of response will be Liz, followed by Youssef. And our last question is, the city of Eagan is currently preparing a climate action plan. What steps would you support the county commission taking with regard to climate change?
Oh, wow. Baby steps is what I, we are taking baby steps towards, I wouldn't call it a climate action plan, but we are taking small steps to address, you know, greenhouse gases, you know, things like that. We are into, we have a massive solar garden that we're installing right now in Hastings. It's huge. We've switched to, a lot of our county-owned vehicles are electric. We're right-sizing our vehicles. I don't think you can do that much with a squad car, but vehicles that we use to go out into the parks, we've switched over from gasoline to electric. So we're, and the unfortunate thing is, switching all this stuff, it's very expensive. But, so you have to take it in steps. So that's, you know, we are addressing those kind of things. We own a dam in, and we're, it was a hundred-year-old dam that we had completely revitalized, and we're talking about using that energy generated by the water. More on that later.
Climate action plan, this is something that a lot of cities, counties, all over America have been working and have put in paper and have put a plan into motion. And Dakota County should be no different. We should be start having those conversations. Like I said, and I had mentioned before, our planet, like, is on a tipping point. We need to start locally and, and, and make sure that we are running on solar in our homes, that apartments that a lot of our community do rent also have an access to solar power or any other energy, form of energy for them to be, because it's expensive also, as well, you know, apartments, using our electric, it can be a little bit, you know, sometimes can, you know, it gets in the pocket of our, our, our communities who are renters, you know, especially these tough economic times, where you're thinking about, well, buy food, or do I pay my bills? It's really challenging. So, and this climate action plan plays into it. So if we need to have a future where we're not afraid for our children and grandchildren, we need to put the climate action plan in place. And as a county commissioner, that's one thing I'm going to do, sit down and really push my other county commissioners in making sure that we put action to paper. We, look, we, we all have stories, and, and what I want to do as a county commissioner is put all this storage into action. And so let's do it. And I think we can be done. We can't wait. It's, it's, you know, no more wasting time. We've got to take care of the space that we have, and it starts with us here in Dakota County and Burnsville.
Thank you. And now that'll bring us to closing statements. Candidates will have two minutes, and the response order is Liz Workman, followed by Youssef Haji. Liz?
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters in the city of Burnsville and the people working the cameras. This, these kind of forums are so important so that voters can see the candidates and decide which one best represents them. This is a, county commissioner is a nonpartisan position, and I actually like it that way. You aren't, you don't have to cater to any particular party. You don't have to represent a particular party. Your focus is on representing the people. And I always put the people first. So I'd like to ask for your vote, keep me in office. I know someone who would like to take my job. But I think I've done well as a commissioner. I, I enjoy what I'm doing, and I would like to stay as your county commissioner.
Youssef?
And also, in conclusion, I, I want to be very clear. Yes, this race is nonpartisan. And so for me, I want to make sure that we are working with all the legislatures at the state level and the federal level and everybody. It's a partnership. I will not go out and attack, you know, other legislatures using, you know, other right, right-wing media. Because as a leader, you're in a position to really partner with some of the state legislatures, and sit down and have that conversation and talk about it. So sometimes our action really says there is nothing called, there is no nonpartisan thing. You know, that is just what we like to label ourselves, but honestly, deep inside, you know, people take sides. And, and, and at the end of the day, you know, you have candidates who have either on one party or the other party, run for county commissioner. And, and so for me, I really believe that, you know, as a county commissioner, you, you must work with others, you must work in partnership, not to be critical of others, others, have a sit-down and really tie, find a solution for Dakota County and also for the people of Burnsville. That is what I truly believe in. And so we can clearly see, you know, that, yes, by name and by word, that we are nonpartisan, but really, that's not what it is. You know, at the end of the day, what we go to the, that county board, we vote on issues that deeply we believe in, and it's got to be a side that you, you, you take, and that's what I'm going to leave at. And Dakota County has grown, it's diverse, and we need different voices at that county board. And I think it's time, collectively, all our voices in Dakota County is heard at the board, and I will do that when I'm elected as the next county commissioner.
And that concludes our candidate forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters Dakota County, we extend our sincere gratitude to everyone who participated in tonight's forum. A special thanks goes to our candidates for their commitment to the democratic process and their willingness to serve our community. The League of Women Voters is dedicated to researching critical issues to our members and the well-being of our communities. If you're interested in learning more about our work and discovering how you can make a difference, please visit us at lwdakodacounty.org. For additional information about voting and candidates, please check out mnvotes.org and vote411.org. Thank you once again for tuning in, and please don't forget to vote by November 5th.